Planning Commission meeting in order, could you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Marsters?
Present.
Commissioner Silverman?
Present.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Present.
And Chair Gutierrez?
Present. Public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on our future commission's agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. There's not a whole lot of people here, but is there anybody here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Approval of minutes, March 7th, 2016. Anybody have any changes, modifications?
Move approval?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
A.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. Ealing your A's. Public hearing. Procedure for public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application. Followed with the staff's recommendation, the applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on their proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in a written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing minutes. Item A, 1847 Eaton Avenue, APN 051406110. Request to specify a required stream setback. And Andrea, are you doing your presentation?
Hi.
All right, great. Sorry, I've had like four expressos today, that's why I'm talking really fast.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Andrea Martisich, and I'll be presenting this item this evening. As you mentioned, the applicant is requesting the planning commission specify a required stream setback for the lot at 1847 Eaton Avenue. On June 15th, 2015, the RDRC Committee approved a first and second floor addition at 1847 Eaton Avenue. The rear of this lot abuts Cortoleras Creek and is therefore within the stream development and maintenance overlay district. This district requires that all development to be set back a minimum of 25 feet from the top of the bank, and this includes all paving structures and any disturbed areas. As the owners were designing the landscape plans for their backyard, they realized that a portion of the existing developed lot in the backyard is already within that 25-foot setback. The map on the screen before you demonstrates a couple of things. The green line at the rear is the rear of their property, and as you can see, the creek is actually, part of it is within the property itself. The red line is the top of the bank, so the 25-foot setback is measured from that red line, and that is the blue line which you see furthest, or closest to the front of the property. And as you can see, this is a proposed site plan. A portion of the development is proposed to be within that 25-foot setback. The municipal code does allow the planning commission to specify a different creek setback, so that is what the applicants are requesting this evening. They are requesting a setback of 11 feet, 7 inches rather than the 25-foot, and this will allow the applicant to remove the existing disturbed area as well as re-landscape, take out the existing pool, put a new pool in, and do some work in the rear of their yard. The existing site is about 11,000 square feet. The top of the creek bank varies from about 21 feet to 27 feet from the rear property line. Within the existing 25-foot setback currently, there is a large concrete area, barbecue, fire pit, spa, and a portion of the existing pool. There's also a guest house that's towards the bottom of the screen which is within that 25-foot setback. The closest area, closest developed area to the top of bank currently is about 3 feet instead of the 25 required, and the total impervious area within that setback is about 1,250 square feet. There's an existing wood fence which is located in front of the top of the bank which is proposed to remain. The applicant would like to remove most of the existing paving, the existing pool and barbecue, and replace it with a new pool, fire pit, and some new paving. However, all of the new development will be located further away from the top of the bank than the existing backyard. So as I mentioned before, the existing backyard is about 3 feet from the top of the bank. They are requesting 11 feet, 7 inches as their new setback. Excuse me. The, with the exception of the pool, fire pit, and the paving, the rest of the area that was paved will be returned to a planting landscape area. And with the new proposal, the impervious area would be 550 square feet, a reduction of about 56 percent. The applicants have provided a diagram which is on the screen. The green area is the 25-foot setback requirement, and the blue area is the impervious surface. So as you can see on the left, the existing impervious surface is more than what is proposed on the right. As part of the review process, a consultant was hired to review the impact of the proposal on the creek bank. The consultant noted that the understory of the habitat is almost bare, which reduces the value of the area for wildlife. The trees include a mixture of native and non-native trees, but no work is being proposed involving those trees. The study notes that the riparian habitats are important for wildlife, but does point out that the quality of this area along the creek is already diminished by the proximity of existing development, and that many residences along the creek have already built into the 25-foot setback and in some cases into the creek itself. The study goes on to state that the further reduction of hardscape as proposed by the applicants will actually reduce the amount of stormwater runoff into Cortoleras Creek, and the proposed setback will actually improve the site's ecology as the impervious surface within the required setback will be reduced. The study does however indicate that a number of common bird species are expected to nest within this area, and construction disturbance during their nesting season could have an impact. There are several recommendations that the report made in relation to this, and those have all been included as conditions of approval. As the study concludes that the project will improve the ecology of the site and reduce the amount of stormwater runoff into the creek, staff has no objections to the proposed setback of 11 feet, 7 inches. If approved, the project would be required to get permits from all applicable state and federal agencies that could have jurisdiction over the area as well. And then one final clarification. The longer memo that's part of the staff report references a 13-foot setback rather than 11 feet, 7 inches. After the report, staff learned that the correct setback is indeed 11 feet, 7 inches. We did talk to the consultant who prepared a memo which was emailed to you today, and a hard copy was also provided which says that the 11 foot, 7 inches does not change any of the recommendations of the study, and they are still in support of the project. This item was noticed in the newspaper as well as sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius. Staff has not received any comments or inquiries on the project, and this is the motion that you would make should you choose to approve the project. I'm available for any questions. The designer, homeowner, and landscape architects are also here as well, and I believe they might be presenting something as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff right now?
I do. Could you go back to the, go back a couple slides, I'll tell you it's there. So, can you, looking at the proposed, can you, using that, show me where the 11 foot, 7 inches go?
Sure.
Actually, maybe I can say this in a different way, like, what appeals to me rhetorically is that the setback be set at wherever the proposed development ends, you know what I'm saying? But clearly, that can't be 11, 7 because it varies from, it doesn't, the, anyway, the development doesn't mirror the bank.
Right. So the 11, 7 is taken at, so notwithstanding the guest house because that's existing, and I believe it's about 9 feet now, they're not proposing to change anything.
Yeah.
The 11, 7 is taken at the closest point from the new development to the creek top of bank, so it would be at this point here, and that's the most restrictive or most conservative measurement.
I mean, would there be a way for us, if we wanted to, to change it to, rather than being 11, 7 across the board, being consistent with the current development? The reason is, is like, this all looks good to me, right? And you know, part of it is because the, the, the development as proposed is farther away from the, from the creek than the current development. But like, I could see, for example, this area of lawn right here, if they lend later, if we change that to be 11, 7 there, and they later decided they wanted to push out, they would be able to do that, and that causes me a little bit of heartache. So, I may be the only one, but if there's a way for us to do that, I feel like I would be inclined to do that.
You would be able to approve it per the proposed site plan, so any changes in terms of paving, anything from this plan would require, however you worded it, would require re-review by the planning commission or re-review by staff if in the future they wanted to push it, push it more forward, or I should say closer to the creek part forward?
Did someone else say something?
I said, or push the upper part forward to be 11, 7.
Well, I don't know, I mean, let's, we'll think about it, but it sounds like it's something we might be able to do. And obviously, you'll have an opportunity to comment on that. If you don't like it, you can explain why, but I think you see where I'm coming from. And then also, I just, I noted, and I don't want to forget, there was some remnants of the, of the report in the findings. Like, for example, in finding 14, it still has the language we recommend, which should be a requirement and not a recommendation. So, I wanted to, when we make the motion, I want to make sure that we, well, first of all, let me ask it a different way. Are all of the recommendations of the report now supposed to be requirements in the conditions of approval?
That was staff's intent.
And there are no, there are no recommendations that were, you know, you decided not to make a condition of approval?
Correct. We included everything and wanted to change them to should, or, you know, to shall.
So, if we, if our motion basically indicated that our intent was that any condition of approval based on the, on the recommend, basically all of the recommendations in the report should be incorporated in the conditions of approval as requirements, that would be fine with staff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's it for me right now.
Okay, so I have one question about the, is the existing house being pushed out also? So is this part of, of a house that's being remodeled as well as, as the area in the back?
Correct. So the house is being remodeled, I believe it's being pushed back further, Natalie, if I remember correctly. The landscaping part was not included as part of that original proposal, so this was not ever reviewed or considered by the RDRC. But to answer your question, yes, the house is being added on to and being pushed closer to the rear.
But well within the, even the permitted existing setback, right? I mean, it's not even close. It looks like, we can see the edge of the house, and it's like, it looks like it's like 20 feet from the existing required setback.
We can pull up a site plan. Yeah. There. Right. So, this area, let me get the mouse over there. This is the rear of the house here, and then the rear over here, and it steps in for this covered patio. So, 50? From the? Is 50 from the top of bank? Okay.
Shows you I shouldn't estimate distances based on drawings. I said 20 feet, 20, 50, it's basically the same, right? All right. Long way.
Scott, did you have anything else?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Commissioner, my name is Scott Boyer. I'm the project landscape architect for the project, and Andrea did a great job going through the presentation, so I'd just maybe like to reiterate, you know, kind of the program and what we're trying to do here. Andrea, if you might, go into the first slide. Be a good way to look at the existing versus the proposed. In the existing hardscape plan, what they currently have out there, of course, is the existing pool, the spa, a fire pit, and a barbecue adjacent to the existing guest house. And what we're proposing are pretty much the same type of amenities. We have the pool, a spa, the fire pit, and then the barbecue which is actually tucked closer to the home now. So, as Andrea stated, we're significantly reducing the amount of existing hardscape within the creek setback, about 56 percent decrease in the paving, which actually adds to a benefit of the creek, and we're just asking for the variance to allow the applicant to program the yard in a very similar fashion that was there when he bought the home. And with that, I'm just, we can open it up to questions or anything else certainly available to talk to in any of that.
So, my question may be the obvious one, which is, I see the section of lawn at the top.
Yes.
Why didn't you orient this so that the lawn is actually in the planting area?
You mean, in the, between the pool and the creek?
Yes.
It's basically for more usability. The lawn over on that side of the yard is a little more easier access from the pool deck and for the kids to play. And then the, the area behind the pool is planted with low water use plant material, and shrubs and other items, ground covers.
It just makes it difficult for me because I'm, I'm looking at this trying to figure out, you know, the, as much as the impervious surfaces should be outside the plant, outside that 25-foot setback, and you've got this big patch of lawn sitting there, and then that just, I don't know if you could have oriented it different, but that's the, the concern that I would have. The other thing, and I, maybe the landscape person when they come up.
Yeah, I think he is the landscape person. Yeah, I'm the landscape architect on the project, yes.
Okay, so why didn't you continue the trees along the bank to the edge of the property?
Well, the trees on the bank of the slope we're not touching, and we're not removing any trees within the upper area of the rear yard as well. There's a lot of existing trees around the perimeter of the site, and that's one reason why we did study orienting the pool in a different manner, but there was some current concerns with the adjacent trees and leaf litter as well as security views from the house having your eyes on the pool, and tucking it up into that corner wasn't as conducive for safety reasons.
So I can see the one on the, the top of the image there, is that because there's a gate there?
There's an existing gate on the fence, yes, at the top corner of the home there.
What about down at the bottom?
There is no gate down there. There's an existing well.
Okay.
For adding more trees, you mean, in that area?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an existing well there in that corner behind the guest home.
Okay. But it looks like the way you've done it, you could add another tree or so in there.
Yeah, there's, there's some possibility of add a tree or two, you know, a smaller type tree. You know, those are some big oaks and the canopies, the trunks are actually, or the trees are actually located down the slope a bit on the backside, so the canopies are actually quite low, and we don't want to stuff too many trees in that area.
Looks like you have a row of trees or hedges along the back there.
That's correct. On the inside bound of the fence, we have some new hedge row material, yes.
Okay.
Pardon me?
That's all the questions I have.
I just have one quick clarification. The squares I see in between the pool and the lawn, are those, are those raised planter beds?
Those are actually part of the pool deck. They're just formed into rectangles, and we have little ground covers in between.
I see, okay.
So it's all level with the pool deck.
That makes sense, thank you.
I don't have any questions.
I have one more question for staff, but that's it.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Is the lawn area considered new development?
It is allowed to be within that 25-foot setback.
The lawn is?
Correct, and plantings.
Okay.
It's the impervious surfaces that's the issue.
Or any grading that they wanted to do. For example, if there were a hillside and they wanted to make it flat, we would say, well, you're disturbing it at that point even if you are putting in plantings, but just straight planting, no?
I'm just struggling with how I'm going to make a motion, that's all. Because I don't know, I don't know how, I mean, I get like making, if other, other people agree, you know, making the, you know, the setback at the, to be set at where the development is proposed, I'm starting, but then if the grass isn't part of development, I mean, like, we should base, I don't want to make the line jog, you know, over here, so I don't know whether, I guess you could say, I wish I, do you know, it's Ms. Highland, is that right? Do you know the distance between the, so looking at the screen, at the top, there we go, right there. Do you know the distance from that corner to the, to the creek bed?
So the corner of where the, like the stepping stone is?
16 feet?
Yeah. We actually, before we came here this evening, we took a dimension from the end of the corner of the pool, not the paving, but if you, right there, from the backside of that wall, the side that's closest to the creek, from that corner perpendicular to the top of creek line was 18 feet. So that corner of pavement that you were previously referring to is probably just over 18 feet.
So the way to do it is to just essentially say that any changes within that 25-foot region have to come back to the city, have to come back to the planning commission?
Yeah, but I don't want to do, I mean, I don't feel like that's set, I totally could do that.
It's what the ordinance states. So even if you don't say it, it's what the ordinance states. So if they make any changes, if they pull up concrete and repour concrete, they're still going to have to come back.
But I don't think, I don't think that that's what they want. I think they want us to change it to 11 feet, and if we change it to 11 feet, then I think that the only stuff that would come back is stuff that is within the 11 feet. I think, so what I, what I would probably do is I would set it at the, at the distance of proposed development or 16 feet, whichever is smaller, because I think that that will basically, it'll, it'll trail, it'll, it'll basically trace the line of the proposed development and then go straight, straight out from here basically, like this. So.
Straight out, right?
Yeah, it's not actually straight, it'll, it'll basically, it'll, it'll go from that corner, it will, from that corner, it will, it will follow the, the, basically, I think it'll actually follow the creek, so it'll basically, you know, you're talking about like, I'm like the least, it'll go like, yeah, yeah. So basically, it would go boop, 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 and then here it would go like that because it would, yeah, because then it'll, that seems like the easiest way to do it frankly.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
It'll, it'll go the same angle as the, as the creek. Yeah. Again, that's what I want, and I'm, I'm not like.
What are you trying, I'm trying to understand what you're trying to accomplish, because what I, what I'm, what I see is that they reduce the amount of area that's supposed to be of the actual creek bed that they're covering, and they're, they're scaling back, what are, what's the part that's giving you the heartburn?
This is what I'm, this is what I'm concerned about. So if we set it at 7 feet, all right, which is what, excuse me, 11, 7, is what they're proposing, if they then want to build something right here, or right here, or right here, they wouldn't have to come back because they wouldn't be within 11, 7.
Is, is that a correct interpretation, Andrea?
And if not, then?
I believe the staff report mentions that as, because it's the area that's closest to the stream. I don't believe, and the applicant can clarify, I don't believe that their intent was to have a reduced setback, they just want to build according to their plan. So, if we want to kind of rein that in a little bit and make it very clear to them, that way, I guess in the future, if they wanted to swap something out, they know kind of what, which areas to follow, I think then the clarification would help. So what we, what we're trying to establish, what we're trying to do is allow the applicant to have a, you know, the impervious surface be according to plan. So however we want to define that, it wasn't really to ask for the, a whole reduction in the setback of 11 feet, 7 inches.
And I'm not worried about them, I'm not like thinking that they're going to like run out and like, okay, now we can go build something else. It's just like 10 years from now, 15, 20, 30 years from now, if they ever decide to sell the house.
Yeah, fair enough.
Which is why, the way the, the way that it's written in the code is that, you know, we approve this, but then if somebody else comes along or if they want to change it, we go back to that 25 feet and they have to ask for another variance.
If that's true, then I'm with you. I just don't, I question whether that's true.
That's why I want to.
Is that true, Andrea?
That's what I'm trying to ask staff. It's, so the variance is only for this?
For this proposal. It's not like a use permit where it runs with the land, so it's, you know, like you would for any project, you know, you're approving this particular proposal, you're not approving, you know, I, I think maybe the confusion came in the way that it's written. We're not establishing a new setback that's going to run with the land.
Right. Well, except that, I mean, look, unfortunately, the city attorney isn't here, but the motion If it remained at 25 feet, I'd be like, well, whatever, just approve the project.
Can we modify it so that we say that it's 11.7 for this project, but if anything varies or new construction is done in the future?
25 feet.
It's 25 feet, unless they come back for an additional variance.
Yes, you can do that. And there may be an easier way to reformulate the recommendation. It's basically what you're doing is approving this design per, you know, sheet L1, date stamped X and X date. You know, that's what you're approving. You're not resetting a different setback, so that if at any point in the future somebody wanted to modify that, we would reevaluate it again. Any kind of, you know, remodified site work that would be within that 25-foot setback, we'd have to reevaluate that again.
That's fine, but that, I mean, I think we need a different motion than the one that we have.
And even if you look at the draft code compliance certificate, it talks about, you know, the setback of 11.7, and it shall apply only to this property.
But it would apply to the property forever?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not the, only the project, it's the entire...
That's correct. We would need to modify the language in the code compliance certificate as well.
Okay.
All right, let's modify.
Yep.
So the master of redoing motions over here, are you going to take a, you going to take a shot at it, or?
I mean, is there any other, I've kind of dominated the discussion, which was unintentional. Does anyone else?
I agree with what you're doing.
I think we agree, yeah. I think we need to close the public hearing, too.
And through the chair, if you look at condition number two, that's within the draft code compliance certificate, that language in there is really what the request is for. It's based upon this proposal that's before you, and references the plan that it's been submitted to the planning division.
Can we just remove number one? If we just remove number one, then...
Yeah, exactly.
We're approving everything.
So would it be okay if the motion was, I move the planning commission to approve...
Let's close, let's move to close the public hearing.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
So would it be okay if basically it was, if it was worded that we're functionally giving, granting a variance to allow the development as proposed despite the 25-foot setback, and without changing the 25-foot setback?
I don't want to complicate things, but we're not, this isn't a variance application. The code allows for an alternative to the 25-foot setback through planning commission approval. So you are basically approving the plan as it's proposed. I know it's a little bit different, because it's not, it's not a formal permit type, it's a process that allows these types of applications, a forum, to be heard, to be discussed, you know, for staff to be able to provide you with the information. You need to look at something different. It's one of those flexibility elements that's built into the code.
Could we just take out number one on the draft code compliance certificate and then reword the motion to say, I move that the planning commission approve the request to establish a stream setback as proposed at 1847 Eaton Avenue?
Sure, you can do that. As proposed, according to the plans, date stamped March 15.
Yeah, that's probably the easiest, cleanest way of doing it.
I don't think it's going to...
Then the problem with doing that...
Your problem, David?
No, it doesn't, because if you do that, then we're setting that setback, okay, as opposed to saying, we're allowing that setback for this project.
Okay, so is it the word setback that's the problem?
Well, the problem is, is, and this is not a complaint by any stretch of the imagination, the reason I phrase it as a variance is because if we treat it as a change of the setback, we have to change the setback. So then we get back to the, you know, the issue that I've raised to begin with, is that if we're changing the setback, we have to figure out how to change the setback in a way that doesn't allow further encroachment towards the stream. So, I mean, I think I'm back to, you know, my, my prior motion, which is a little more complicated, but I'm...
I'm following your logic, but I'm wondering if, if just taking 11.7 out, though, makes it, so, yeah, we would be changing the permanent stream setback, but only to the plans as they exist here, if I'm reading it right.
Yes.
That's how I understand it.
That's what I, yes. Okay. Okay.
I mean, I'm no, I'm no caveman lawyer, I'm just, I'm just...
You are kind of a caveman. You're probably a caveman lawyer. Okay. So I move that the planning commission approve the request of Holden and Kristen Quail to establish a stream setback that is no, no smaller than that consistent with the currently proposed development at 847 Eaton Avenue, based on the reasons incorporated in the staff report, deleting item one of the draft code compliance certificate, and requiring all of the recommendations contained in the January 4, 2015 report from Harvey and Associates.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Can, can we add that any significant change to this will require them to come back to the planning commission?
I will accept that as a friendly amendment and second it.
Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call vote? Please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. Thank you. Moving along. Reports, correspondence, and general information. Report on recent city council actions.
At the last city council hearing, as may be of no surprise to this commission, I believe, I'm not sure which council member, but I wasn't there, but I am of the understanding that the city council is also interested in doing a study to look at lot splits, bulk and mass, how many 10,000 square foot lots are currently in the city, the potential for how many more. So it was shared with the council that the planning commission also requested a similar study, and so the council will wait to hear what the planning commission's comments are on that matter, and then hear it most likely in May. So what staff is preparing to do is bring back a study to the planning commission. We're targeting April 18th, and then thereafter, we will take your comments and present those to the city council in a study session format in the month of May. And it will remain to be seen what kind of direction we get. So it'd actually be a good opportunity to address the issues, we're hearing more and more about those concerns in the community. Other than that, no other city council reports from staff.
Great, thank you. Planning commission comments or reports?
I have one, just to piggyback off of that. And I know I have, I brought this up at a meeting, gosh, months and months and months ago, but since, since the planning department will be doing a study on the lot splits and bulk and mass, I'm also wondering if we can examine if some other elements of our code are leaning people to build a certain style of...
What style? What style would that be?
Call it the Craftsman Code.
Let me make this clear. I am certainly not here to tell anybody whether or not they should build a Craftsman or any other style they deem appropriate for their house, but I'm wondering if, because of our, particularly our second story setbacks, if in order for a developer to come in with a clean property, one of the only options seems to be to build a Craftsman for a modern house. That's literally almost the only thing I've seen come before RDRC. And if that's the case, I'm wondering if perhaps we should examine the second floor setbacks or, or other things in the code that I'm not fully understanding that is leaning towards San Carlos becoming Craftsman Carlos.
I think we can take a look at that. I mean, it is within the context of bulk and mass. Obviously, the setbacks are a big part of that bulk and mass, bulk and mass discussion. So we can take that into consideration as we, you know, I mean, I think we can do that, if we can do that as well.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Correspondents. Planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects.
This is way advanced notice, but I can give it. Now, it seems that we'll likely be taking a recess or a break in the month of August. So we're looking at August 1st and 15th. This is tentative at this point, but usually the city council takes a recess in August, and we would do the same for the planning commission, but we would maintain our RDRC hearings.
I'm not on it. I'm not on it anymore. We'll have some news sucker on the commission.
You're still live, David, okay?
And then my last update is to share with the commission that the lot split that was approved for 2115 Wide Oak Way, there were no appeals filed.
Okay.
So that stands, and then, of course, the design review aspect will be coming back to the planning commission. And that's all I have.
Great. One last question, too. I know we had talked briefly about maybe getting a presentation about the affordable housing and the formulas that we use on that. Do we have any ETA on that? I know we just added another project or another item to the agenda there, but do we know when that might happen?
I think we wanted to, actually, in the status on what's being done with all the affordable housing funds, too, what was, not just, not just the makeup of how it's calculated, but I personally wanted to understand what we're, what we're doing with all the money that's being going to be held.
Like if something is conceptually in the works for, for that money?
Yeah.
To potentially build some affordable housing?
We can probably bring that back somewhere around the same time as the subdivision study. We can, you know, target April, maybe early May for that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
One other thing, which is the outdoor dining thing that was brought, is that moving forward?
It is, and I believe that the city has received a number of applications for that, and the next step is to really start the review process. I believe you're on the committee, right?
Heard anything, so I was just wondering.
I know, we traded emails, and I thought that you might have received a response, but it seems like not, so I'll make sure you get one tomorrow.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks.
Great. If that's, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.